Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our town hall meeting here in beautiful downtown New Ulm. We're happy to be here. This is our second town hall meeting of the day. We've got three more after this, I believe, so getting around the district after finishing up the session on Sunday night, actually early Monday morning after we heard retirement speeches in the House. So, I don't know about Gary, but I'm still a little bit bleary-eyed after some late nights of wrapping up our work in the House and Senate. But got our work done, and got it done a few minutes before the Senate, so we're very proud of that.
It doesn't take much to keep them happy.
Oh, I can see where this is going. Anyway, you know, my main message today is that if you have something in the three big bills that are on the governor's desk waiting for his decision on whether to sign them or not, that you contact the governor's office and let him know how important these issues are. There are important things in all three of these bills. I'm talking now about the special spending bill, the big bill that was passed. I'm talking about the tax bill, and I'm talking about the bonding bill. They all have very important provisions, and we'll cover some of those today. I'm going to talk first about the bonding bill, actually. This is the second year of the biennium. It's traditionally the bonding year, and we did assemble a substantial bonding bill, 825 million of GO bonds. But for me, as Chair of the Transportation Finance Committee, the highlight of that bonding bill really is in the trunk highway bond authorization. We authorized another 400 million of trunk highway bonds, and they're focused on three major projects, two of them in greater Minnesota, one being Highway 14. Now, I didn't get the chunk of Highway 14 coming to New Ulm, but we did get the chunk of Highway 14 between Owatonna and Dodge Center, a project that's been on the drawing boards for decades, will be funded. And by getting that funded, that puts us in one step closer to getting our chunk done here in Nicollet County from Nicollet to New Ulm. That's, as you know, they're doing some planning on that, so it's not like it's not being considered. But the funding isn't in place for that chunk yet, but getting the rest of 14 funded is very important. The other big project for greater Minnesota is Highway 23 between Wilmer and Interstate 94, where we have another situation where it goes from four lanes to two lanes to four lanes to two lanes, just a very unsafe situation. Another project that's been on the drawing boards for a long time. So, for me, as Chair of Transportation Finance, that's very exciting to take those steps in the right direction and get some more work done in greater Minnesota. I don't know if you saw the corridors of commerce announcement that was made during session, where all the projects ended up in a very tight area, right around the metro area, that may upset me quite a bit, because I didn't think they needed to do that. But we have compensated for that now in the bonding bill. The other areas that I will emphasize very briefly, in the omnibus spending bill, we have the situation where this 7% for our group homes is replaced, or I don't know what the right term is, but anyway, they get the money. It's very important, and if the governor doesn't sign that bill, it actually results in a 7% cut. And this is for a group of folks that are already on a very tight shoestring, and we understand that, and we hope the governor sees the value in signing that. The other thing I'd highlight is the issue that I've had to deal with quite a bit is this MinLars thing. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it. It's a program that does tabs and titles and license plates here in Minnesota. The rollout was last July. They had told me it was going to work when it rolled out. Of course, it didn't work. It's still not working in all aspects, so we have some funding in there to make sure that that work on that program continues, but also some funding for our deputy registrars who have really taken the brunt of the problems here, because they're the people that are at the desk trying to meet people's needs. And if the program doesn't work, they can't meet people's needs, and they've lost money, frankly, which either -- we have a variety of deputy registrars across the state. Some are privately owned, some are publicly owned. In any case, for the privately owned ones, some of those folks have had to take out a second mortgage on their house just to keep their business open. And in the case of the publicly owned ones, you know, it's another burden on local government to fund that office, which is not generating the kind of revenue that it used to. So, we're hoping that the governor sees how important that is. He did veto a bill that would have brought some money to those deputy registrars, which was very disappointing. We tried to override that veto, but the other side of the aisle did not put up any votes, even though they had voted. It passed the House with 101 votes, I believe. We need 90 to override a veto, but we got no support from the other side of the aisle to override that veto. So, those are a few highlights. Another bright spot of the session is the passage of the pensions bill, a bill that's been in process for about three years. It affects anybody who's on a public pension. Very important work, because it means that we put that structure of that pension system on much firmer ground than it was. We're asking those that benefit to contribute a little more. We're going to contribute a little more from the state's side and kind of change the formula so that it's in much more solid financial condition. With that, I'll pass it on to my colleague and my senator, Senator Gary Daines.
Well, thank you, Paul, and thank you, folks, for being here. We certainly do appreciate it. Paul talked about it quite a few things went on. A couple of things I'd just like to talk a little about is the childcare crisis we have in Minnesota, and that certainly is a crisis. We had a hearing, and I believe it was the first Tuesday in May, and that hearing was scheduled to be an hour and a half. Hearing lasted about three and a half hours, and we had several -- we had the -- this was an informational hearing, so it was not a hearing that we would transact any business on, but it was surprising. We had invited several folks that are daycare providers to come in and talk about some of the issues that they're working with and trying to work through in order to continue to be daycare providers, some of the challenges of being daycare providers, and then a lot about the penalties and stuff that are coming forth, the citations and stuff for things that are happening within the daycare provisional system. And it was really -- it was -- first started out to be interesting, but time the night was over, it was not only interesting, it was very maddening to see what was going on. It's quite obvious that we have a bureaucratic system that's out of control. And some of the statistics that came up that night I found to be very interesting. In the previous administration, we lost one -- every year, they do a net gain, net loss of number of daycare child providers. The previous administration, we were losing 100 provider net loss per year. The last administration, this administration we're in now, we're averaging a net loss of 800 childcare providers every year since the governor took office. So then you start wondering what's going on. You start looking at, follow the trail. And the first thing is when the four-year-old education came about, put a real pressure on childcare providers, because they are, the four-year-olds are a category to where they're probably the easier to care for, and the numbers of four-year-olds you could have is different than the number of newborns that you can have. The newborns are certainly the highest care there is. And so, when you take the four-year-olds out, you really shuffle that mix, and it starts affecting profitability and ability for folks to do the childcare. Then you take a look at when the move to unionize childcare came about, and you really start seeing the rules and regulations, rulemaking kick up by the department. And these were examples in the department, actually, they were there, and they did not deny that this wasn't happening, and their comment basically was, "We need to keep our children safe." Well, I don't think there's anybody in that room and anybody in this room that don't agree. We need to keep our children safe. But when you have an individual that has a childcare license, and their husband comes home at work at night, and their son or daughter runs over to their dad and gives him a hug, and he picks his daughter up, and he hugs her, and he gets a citation, because he's not a daycare provider not licensed, so he's not allowed to handle the children. You have a father comes home, and he takes his two older children that are still in daycare, takes them upstairs, and helps them do their homework. He got a citation for removing the children from the daycare premises without permission. Now, when we get to that level, if those are the type of citations we're giving people, I think we're missing the boat. I don't know that that's about safe children. That's about bureaucracy. So, what has happened is they've established a childcare task force, and that'll be held this summer, and hopefully then we can get -- and we're bringing people in from very various pieces of this to be on that task force. When that task force is over, we're hoping that we can sit down with the department and come up with some reasonable rules and regulations that can help start turning this thing around, so we can start getting people back into daycare. I don't care if you're in a very, very small community or a very large community. Daycare is a major issue, and it's something that we have to deal with. It's an issue when it comes to employment, because in a lot of cases, there's folks who'd like to go back to work, but they're unable to, because they can't find proper daycare, or they can't find daycare for their children. Families are actually deciding when they'll start a family by who's available to take care of their children. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do there. Education, we put a lot of money into education this year for safe schools. We put about $105 million designated for safe schools. And what that money is for is for the school districts to what we call hardening their schools. They can use it for facility improvements, such as safety glass and things like that. They can also use it for resource officers. They can use it for psychologists. They can use it for counselors. They can use it for mental, bring in some mental providers in. We put in about $20 million for the safe school part of it, $5 million for the mental health part of it. So, we're trying to do quite a bit in that arena this year, because it is an issue, and so we did put in money there. We also have money sitting in some pots within education. Statutorily, that money has to stay in those pots. However, in some cases, there's quite an excess, and it's not being used. So, back in 2013 or '14, we did this one time. We allowed them for one year. They could transfer some of that money out of those pots. And this year, we're going to allow them to transfer some of that money out to safe schools. So, that's kind of where that's at. I think what we'll do at this point is just open it up for questions and try to answer any questions you might have. So, who would like to go first? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to point out, as a mother now of a nine-year-old, that the -- is it for the TV or ...?
Yep.
Okay. I lived in the Twin Cities before moving down here, and daycare was $1,600 a month. And then, moving down here, it was still a good portion of my paycheck. And it was more important to me that it was a safe environment, that people who I didn't know, or I didn't know went through safety and background checks, were not around the children. And that was extremely important to me. So, I think what is more important with daycare is the rising cost. So, as a mom, it was hard to go back to work, not because of finding daycare, it's finding quality daycare where I felt my children were safe. And I've seen local daycares where there's a million children, it seems like one person, and they're all just kind of wandering around. And I mean, that doesn't feel safe to me. And so, I had to pay much more to make sure that I felt like they were in a safe environment. So, when looking at daycare, it's really cost is what affects people planning to have children, and also being able to go back to work, is finding the quality care at a reasonable cost. And $1,600 a month is not reasonable, finding it, even in the Twin Cities. And that was a place where you had to log in and log out, and there was a safety door, and everyone had to go through a background check. I mean, to me, that's the issue with daycare. And when on the task force, they really need to look at how to offset that cost to help working mothers be able to go back into the work environment.
And I think that's a very good point. And that's one of the things the task force has been challenged to do, is take a look at all aspects. And one of the drivers of cost is the regulations. That certainly is one of the drivers of cost. Now, like I said earlier, I don't think there's anybody in this room, and I know there certainly wasn't anybody in the hearing room, that don't want to see children in safe environments. We absolutely want to see children in safe environments. But there's a lot of regulations in there that do not change the safety environment that probably can be taken a look at. But I agree with you. Cost is a major issue.
I mean, nine years ago, nine years ago, it was the Plante administration. It wasn't the Dade administration. So, that's, I mean, it's not administration why that's causing the problem. I mean, it's just really expensive to put your kid in daycare.
Well, that is true, but it is the administration that's causing the change in the number of people going out of it. That's due to rules and regulations of the current administration. When you brought in the four-year-olds, you took that category out of there. That drove the price considerably. There's a lot of things that happen with rules and regulations, that when you take a look at the previous administration or current administration, when you have that vast of a number change, there's reasons why that happens.
But having those four-year-olds have the opportunity for preschool helps the parents in the cost factor, because all of a sudden, then preschool is now free. And so, yeah, it does hurt daycares, but it makes it easier for women to then get back into the workforce.
And I appreciate your agreeing with me that that's what drove the cost. Thank you.
Well, I don't say that drove the cost. I'm just saying that helps women.
Well, you just did. But, and I agree, but my point is, is that you need safe daycares. I understand that, and you have to have it at a reasonable price. But you also have to look at how that price got to where it's at. Yep. Other questions, concerns?
Obviously, I'd ask a question about elections. Jean Prochnak, Brown County Auditor Treasurer. Did anything happen with the approval of the election equipment for the disabled replacement of what we call the automark now in our polling places? I know there was something on the table, and I don't know if it made it through.
I don't know, Jean. I do know that there's some federal money available.
For cyber security.
To help make our election systems more secure.
Right.
And if the governor doesn't sign the omnibus bill, we will not get those federal funds. They will not be available. They'll actually just sit on a shelf somewhere until we actually approve that. And if we don't approve it till next session, those funds will not be available, and we'll not be able to make our election system more secure by utilizing those federal funds. I don't know the answer to your question about the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Next. Other questions?
This guy here mentioned something about the cost of daycare, want to be safe and all that. Where that, I believe that if parents or people who want to have children, they need to take responsibility themselves for everything that goes on, everything, not just the cost or this or that. They need to take the responsibility of raising those children, to keep them safe, to teach them right, and to do everything. Daycare is not a place you just dump your kids out and go to work and come pick them up. It's not that at all. Like Senator Daines said here, the guy got a citation for going down and hugging his child? Well, that's unreasonable. I can't even imagine that. I can't even imagine that. Whoever made this rule or regulation should be removed. That away with. That's a disease, is what it is. And the parents, even the parents within that daycare center, should have went and backed this guy up and said, "This is wrong." Okay? But you've got to take responsibility for your children 100%, and if they do something wrong, you also take responsibility for their actions of doing something wrong, and make sure that child is taken care of so it doesn't do it again, either through several methods of either learning or punishment, it has to be that way, or any other method that's approved. Okay? Take responsibility.
Other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to thank you both for supporting the 7% best alliance, not for the help you did so that it did pass. I do know that it is in the bill that Governor Dayton can veto, but we appreciate the work that you did. Even with saving that 7% cut, we're usually out advocating for an increase so that we can maintain quality staff and just maintain our programs for the people who are most vulnerable in this country. So, we hope that if Governor Dayton does go ahead and that bill does pass, and we do keep the 7%, that you will continue to remember us at the beginning of this next year and fight for us, and just be that, be in there for us, so that we can increase the amount that we can spend on good staffing, good service for these people. I was thinking last night, as I was reading a story to our granddaughter, it was Horton Here's the Who. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Dr. Seuss's work, but in there, it talks about, you know, where the Whoville is on that little speck of dust, and Horton has heard him loud and clear, but nobody else can hear, and the mayor's running through Whoville, looking for that last person that maybe could make the difference. And he finally finds that one little schwurker, and crawls to the highest tower, and he says, "This is, you know, your town's darkest hour. You know, come on, lad, yell out." And of course, he does yell out "yap," and that "yap" brings that whole piece to light, and everybody understands what the whole problem is. And so, I'm hoping that next year, somebody or something will be that "yap" and put us over, so that everybody hears loud and clear that we do need that support for our most vulnerable.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We certainly understand the issue. It's been a real challenge to find more resources to address it. I think I heard one of the leaders of your industry say the other day that there's 10,000 openings across the state right now, jobs that are available but unfilled. And part of the reason that they're unfilled is because of the low compensation. We understand that. First step is to get the 7% secured. That's very, very important, and as you said, it's in the bill, and I would hope that folks will reach out to the governor and make sure that he understands that the impact of his veto is a real impact on many Minnesotans, a negative impact on many Minnesotans, not just in this area, but in other areas within the bill. So, we've heard your loud clear, but keep telling us, because we need to hear it every time. For us here in our districts, it's like a hidden industry, because we have so many group homes here in New Ulm and in Renter Falls and scattered all across the district. It affects a lot of people, and we'll keep calling.
Thank you. Questions for the senators? Senator, do you have citation numbers or names or any other information regarding those two anecdotes that you alluded to earlier?
If you want to get those, you can go back into the hearing. You can, the hearing is on tape. People have done this. You can go into the hearing, and you can get, you can listen to the hearing and pick up that information, so you can track it back down. Keep in mind that they're going to have a hard time discussing it, because in fact, it's private information. Go through and listen to the tape, and if you want to call my office and ask Wendy if she can get you the date of that tape, the date of that hearing, and then you can go in and you can watch that three and a half hour hearing if you so choose to do that. Yes.
Okay, and you said Wendy from your office?
Wendy.
Wendy could provide that? Okay.
She'll be able to find that for you and get back to you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet. Next.
Okay, so, my name is Barb Becker, and I'm a supervisor for MBW Company. And the ladies that I support at the House are very involved in the community, and they want to just express that staff deserve raises, because they're reliable, and if they need to go to the doctor, you know, they know they can count on us. And if they need a ride to work on the weekends, you know, staff provides that. And so, Jenny, do you want to say anything more? No? Okay.
And I certainly appreciate your comments. Well put.
Yeah.
And it takes a special person to do this job, and it's got to be very stressful. And so, it's really unfortunate that we're unable to reward you financially to where you should be, just to be competitive, much less alone, doing the job with the stress and not having competitive salary. Very well aware of that. Paul and I have been very supportive of all of the increases that have come along, some successfully, some not, but we'll continue to be there. We've got to get through this 7% piece, as Paul alluded to earlier, get through that, and then start trying to move the ball forward again on some of the increases to get you more competitive, because unfortunately, not only is this a tough industry to be in, but the other problem is, is when you get good people, you help train them, and when you get them trained, it's pretty easy to go someplace else and get a higher wage. And so, that's where it really makes it tough for you, is not only are you not able to pay the people a salary that needs to be there, but you also lose them so easily after you've invested many dollars training them and getting them to that point. So, that's certainly another piece of, but thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
So, our people are not here because of their wage. Obviously, they work for the industry because of the people they care for and their best interest.
Yes, and I think that that's really recognized. I mean, I know that Paul and I certainly understand that, and the colleagues I talk to certainly understand that. This isn't that you're there just because of the salary. That's not why you're there, but you are there because you want to help people.
Right.
It takes a special person to do that. So, the offside of that is you should at least receive a proper salary.
Thank you, Gary and Paul.
Next.
Yes, Scott Winchittle, Brown County Commissioner. You talked about MinLars and obviously the problems that we've had there, and you're well aware of them. For the general public, they may not be, but the real disappointment and problems there didn't develop just overnight. Our License Bureau told us from six months before it went into effect that it was disastrous process, that they didn't do any pre-testing of the system to see if it was going to work in smaller levels and those types of things. There was no way to correct errors that were made in the system, or if they punched in a wrong key, they couldn't go in and change things. So, that was very frustrating. Then, of course, if we back up one level from there, we go back to MinSure, which was designed by the same set of people, is my understanding, which is the state of Minnesota. And now, I just read in the Minnesota Counties, I think it was Minnesota Association of Counties make a paper, newspaper, that the Met system, be prepared, they're coming out with another round of absolute disaster going to happen. There's no pre-testing of this system again, where they're just dumping the old system and coming in with new. What can we do to stop this foolishness and to get people what they deserve? It just seems common sense to me that you would test the system out before it was put into play, and how could you, as legislators, help us in that process?
Well, as you expressed, Minut's had all sorts of problems with not just MinLars, but a variety of computer programs. In the transportation bill this year, we put a clause in that it requires them to go out and evaluate whether or not they can get an outside vendor to do some of this work. And in fact, with, we have Real ID coming in October. Last year during session, I actually asked the commissioner, who was the commissioner of Minut at that time, "Can't we go to an outside vendor to do the Real ID program?" They told me during session that, "No, no, we can't. We can't go to an outside vendor. These systems are too closely integrated. We have to do it in-house." So, what did they do after session was over? They went out and hired an outside vendor to do the driver's license portion. They've hired a company called Fast Systems. They're based in Colorado. They've rolled out driver's license systems in nine other states. I've had a chance to meet with the leadership, the leader of the team that's working on this software here in Minnesota. It sounds like they're right on track to be able to offer Real IDs in October, and they're already doing testing. As you mentioned, testing is so important to get these systems up and running. So, that's the direction we're trying to push. On the other hand, we can't pull the plug on MinLars. It has to, we have to keep the parts that are running, running. So, we have funding in the omnibus bill that would go to Minut to keep the MinLars system working and making some improvements over time. We also have some money for the deputy registrars. We also have some money for the deputy registrars. So it's, it's been a real bugaboo, I tell you. And we have, we also, in the bill that passed this year where we gave them an initial $10 million, you have to remember that's on top of $93 million that they had already spent on this computer system. We gave them another $10 million because the governor and the, and the leaders in that area came forward and said, "We need more money." And we gave them the $10 million, but along with that, we put a clause in there that says you have to look, look at outside vendors. So we're trying to move the ball in the right direction, but it's been...
It seems to me that there are times when, like you said, that we would be advantageous for us to look at outside vendors, especially on issues where there are multiple states that are already being served by this vendor successfully, rather than Minnesota trying to say, "Well, gee, let's do our own thing here and, and kind of stand out and have our own product." It just, it seems to me would be wise of...
When you, when you sign a contract with an outside vendor, you can, you know, the contract specifies what they're supposed to deliver and when, and you've got some way to come back and say, "Hey, you didn't perform. You didn't do what you said you'd do in the contract." When you're doing it with the state agency, what's the recourse? There is, we don't have any real recourse to, to hold them accountable and that's very, very challenging.
Yes, sir.
I'm Dave Borkert. I'm a Brown County Commissioner. And question revolves around corridors of commerce. And Representative Torkelson, you, you attend the same meetings I do regarding corridors of commerce.
Right.
And we had concerns, you know, early on, there were some concerns with the, with the scoring. You know, pretty much everything that was predicted turned out as far as the results of that, that scoring and every, you know, the, those projects within 50 miles of, of Minneapolis. And, you know, Highway 14 at that time received no funding and you, you touched on it. So I guess my question is, could you maybe just elaborate briefly on that? Because, because there, you know, there's, there's, Highway 14, as far as corridors of commerce, the Highway 14 partnership, we're focused on two sections. One is Dodge Center. So that, that was certainly a win and I appreciate that. The other dangerous section is Nicola County here into Brown County. Well, it's exclusively Nicola County, but it certainly affects our Brown County residents as far as safe travel to, to Mankato and to, you know, the, the whole reason for the corridors of commerce, connecting economic regions. And, you know, certainly in New Ulm here, you know, we feel a little bit deprived. It's a dangerous section. We just recently had a fatality. As a Brown County Commissioner, as a police commander, you know, I've, I've literally been out there. So, you know, there's, there's kind of a, a personal part as far as when you're, you have someone that suffers a fatality or serious injury on that highway. And I've, I've been there as far as rubber hits the road. And also I just recently had a neighbor that fatal accident that happened on Highway 14. So as far as, you know, one is if you could just touch a little bit on what you see as far as the progress for Highway 14. Again, you touched on a little bit, Representative Torkelson. And the other thing is, as far as the scoring, is there going to be some type of change as far as the scoring criteria for corridors of commerce? Because, you know, in the future, I think that that's, that's, that's vital for our area, especially for greater Minnesota.
Right. No, I, I, you know, I've been to, as you said, the same meetings you have. I understand how important 14 is regionally and I've, I've done everything I can to move the ball forward for 14. But you also have to remember that there are similar projects all around the state where people are dying in car crashes and we want to spend the money as effectively as we can and that's really up to the department. Now, what happened with the first allocation of corridors this year, as you described, it ended up really focused on the metropolitan area. If you think back to during the process, when they alluded to the, that they might go 60-40, 60% metro and 40% rural instead of 50-50, there was a huge outcry from greater Minnesota. And the department backed off and said, "Well, we're, no, okay, we won't do that. We'll go, we'll stick with 50-50." But what they didn't tell us is that they were going to call the metro strictly that metropolitan mindat area and that anything outside of that, even if it was right up against it, would be called greater Minnesota. Well, you saw the results of that first allocation and it was horrible. I was, yeah, I don't know if you saw my reaction, publicly I let the commissioner know how I felt in no uncertain terms. Now, what happened after that was the governor went fishing. He went up to Wilmer for the fishing opener and the guy driving his boat told the governor a story about a young person's funeral he had been to. This young person had died in an accident on Highway 23. And the governor at that point said, "Well, I guarantee you, we're going to fix Highway 23." Well, that kind of changed the playing field quite a bit. So then we were able to go in and say, "Okay, if we're going to continue down the corridors list, the next rural project, greater Minnesota project is 14 from Owatonna to Dodge Center, a project that's, as you know, been waiting a long time to get funded." And it scored high. It was the next highest scoring project on the, on the outstate list. So we took that project. The next, then we had to take a metro project, so we picked up 252 in the metro. And then we wrote some language that said, and actually the department wrote the language that said, "The next project is going to be another rural project." And that's how we picked up 23. So if you look at now, if you look at the whole package of corridors for the year, assuming the governor signs the bonding bill, the, the whole package actually looks pretty well-balanced now between metro and greater Minnesota. Of course, we didn't get our, our, our chunk here in Nicola County, but it's a high, certainly a high priority for me personally and I will keep fighting to try and get that funded. But if you look at the scoring list, it was, that chunk was quite a bit further down the The future of corridors of commerce to me is a little shaky. Either we have to rewrite the criteria and I would like to get away from this idea that we divided the fund by metro versus greater Minnesota. I don't think that's the right division. Corridors was designed to interconnect regional centers. Corridors of Commerce is, is the title. And it's not the way it's been used, especially this last year. So I, I think either we fix it or we maybe abandon it and go to a new, a new, a new way of prioritizing projects so we do get our fair share in greater Minnesota.
And I, you know, I appreciate the fact that we have, because with Dodge Center, you know, being fixed now, or, or at least that, that being a focus, that would certainly help us as far as the Highway 14 partnership because now we just, you know, one down, one to go as far as, you know, our interests, what our concerns are for greater Minnesota. You know, regarding the, the scoring though, I, I still have concerns because if we have, you know, if, I think if we abandon it, because, you know, and I've been part of that discussion before when, when you had said, you know, it sets metro against greater Minnesota. I can see that, but metro, you know, what I see living out here and serving out here is that metro always wins and the money really gets focused there. And I, I'd be very concerned...
I'd just say not always because we had two big wins just last week.
Correct.
The greater Minnesota.
But we lost big time with the corridors of commerce, the initial, the initial scoring criteria and, and that concerns me. And I think that concerns, you know, if you want to address the elephant in the room, that concerns a lot of us.
Oh, and it concerns me too.
Next.
Karen Moore, it's Brown County Public Health Director. I think you both are aware that mental, taking care of the people with mental illness in our state has been a great challenge for many entities throughout. And I, I, how did the bonding bill come out in that? I, I think there was still some funds in the bonding bill for, to address that.
Yes, there is 30 million for six regional centers and that will include some new beds. And then there's also $20 million and that is also for mental health. And I, I don't remember the exact criteria on that, but we have $50 million in the bonding bill for mental health throughout the state of Minnesota now. Sounds, 50 million sounds like a lot of dollars. It's a good start, but it's going to take a lot more. We also have 5 million in the education bill for mental health within the school system. So total about $55 million. But like I say, that's a good start, but probably will, you know, certainly be, have to be worked on again in the future.
Certainly want to thank you for that work.
And a lot of the problem is we don't have the facilities available to send these people. So they end up sitting in our jails and in our hospitals where they don't belong. And you're well aware of that. And, and part of what Gary's talking about, some of the spending, we'll try to alleviate that and get, get the right people in the right place for the right treatment that they need.
We also put, and I don't remember how many million it was, in, in the omnibus bill for opioids and that has a lot of impact on mental health. And so we're trying to attack it from both sides. And I think it was like eight million that we put in for opioid education and things like that. We were hoping for a different type of structure. We were hoping to get like, say, a penny a pill from the manufacturers or hoping to increase the licensing fee for manufacturing opioids. But at the end of the day, we weren't able to get that, but we did take some money out of the general fund. And so that will also help alleviate as that process gets going better, some of the other issues with mental health.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if there were any changes or recommendations in the bills regarding property taxation. I have had some concerns. We've had a little discussion here about greater Minnesota. I just think when I look at our businesses paying the same tax capacity rate as you pay in the metro area, we can't generate that kind of revenue down here and it hurts our businesses. And we would like to be strong and vital as a community as well. And, you know, it, it's very difficult. I, I compare if you, I, my analogy, I guess, that I use, if you have a restaurant in New Ulm, we have a few more people here that can eat at that restaurant and we have some people that do come into our community and will go there. You get into our smaller community, communities, Sleepy Eye Springfield and Comfrey, the numbers are not there. I mean, and, and we don't travel there as much and, and yet they're paying the same rates. And so I just have concerns for our businesses and I'd love to see them grow. And I think finding a way through legislation for greater Minnesota, depending on population, is there, I, we've got the most complicated tax system, why don't we just take it to the nth degree?
You're, well, you're right about that complicated part. And, and in some ways, our over-dependence on property tax to fund a variety of, of things. You know, one thing we've been fighting against for a long time is the statewide business property tax. We would like to eliminate it. I think it's inappropriate. It has an automatic inflator in it. We, we did eliminate that, but it should just go away. It's not, it, it puts that, as you expressed, this extra burden on businesses and especially in our small towns and in less populated counties, it's, it's really a huge problem. We did get, there's language in the tax bill that takes care of this fractionalization issue. It's kind of in the weeds for anybody but you and me and Gary, I'm afraid, but, but we did get that in there and it's something that I worked on behind the scenes quite a bit to try and address that.
We also got the trust language. That's in the tax bill too, on trusts where the farmer puts the land in a trust and it can't be homesteaded. There's also some language to clarify that also, so. But the business part of it, no, that's a tough one and especially that business-wide property tax and it's been around for many years and the inflator was 8% a year and we know that that was way off, but that did get taken out. And then last year, we actually didn't, I think last year, we didn't have the actual statewide business tax, but now it's back again. So continues to need to be worked on, that's for sure. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Dan called with the county attorney's office. Last few years, it's got kind of this, this movement of criminal justice reform, specifically as it relates to nonviolent drug offenders. At least that's, seems to be the category that gets the headlines. Minnesota kind of followed suit July last year. They did do revised some of their criminal statutes that created a gross misdemeanor trace, what's called trace cases for certain controlled substances. My question is, is where did you stand with that? Do you think it went too far, not far enough? Or is there more that can be done as far as, I guess, the, that situation in general?
Yeah, I can't speak to those specifics. I'm not familiar with them. But in general, I think, you know, our prison population is, is bigger than it should be. We need to think of other ways to deal with these issues rather than throwing people in jail. It's, it's not a healthy place for them necessarily and when they're in jail, it's costing us a lot of money to keep them there. So I, in general, I think that's the direction we need to, to move, especially for these lower impact crimes. Gary may add more.
And I would agree with what Paul said. I think that we need to be, we need to make sure that the right population that needs to be in prison is in prison. But I also think we need to see if there's other populations that we can do things outside the prisons to help them move forward and work through that process.
So just to follow up, so I guess without knowing the specifics of something like this, but would you generally be in favor of revisiting some of the mandatory minimums on some of the medium to higher type controlled substances crimes?
Well, there's, in my mind, and I'm no expert in, in this area, but in my mind, there's a big difference between the users and the dealers or the providers. And that's where we need to kind of, I think we need to try to avoid putting the user in jail just because they happen to get addicted. And, but we still need to, these, these substances are controlled for a reason and we need to keep them off our streets. We've seen a resurgence in meth, for instance. You know, for, we had a horrible problem a few years ago with the stuff that was being manufactured right here in Minnesota. We kind of got that taken care of, at least tamped down pretty good, but now we're seeing huge amounts coming in of cheap meth coming in from Mexico. We need to, we need to clamp down on that. This, it's, it's really, you know, it causes a lot of problems in our society when these cheap drugs come across our borders.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here and for the work that you do. It's dismaying to me that we as a nation are less and less even discussing gun violence. Hadn't been brought up here today by you or anybody else. The incidents, it seems to me, of gun-related violence, whether it's rape, murder, robbery, kids in school, law enforcement confrontation, it's increasing, probably for my whole lifetime. But the direction seems clear. The discussion to me seems to be less and less constructive, more and more bipartisan. Democrats at this point seem to have retreated to begging for crumbs. Republicans seem to have retreated to the NRA position that we can't do absolutely anything because it'll be a crack in the door and they're going to come and collect all our guns, mine included. I ain't buying it. There's got to be something we can do. This Time Warner argument that it's, it's not the guns, it's the people. Well, of course, it's people, but it's also guns. It's everything. It's, it's a lot of pieces to it. Any comments? Please.
Well, thank you. Of course, when you say it wasn't discussed, it's actually been a very hot topic in the media and at the legislature. We've had a lot of discussions this year. Our choice was, in the case of school gun violence, to really invest in our schools. If you, as I travel around the district and look at different schools, some schools have made dramatic changes in their building to try and make sure that the entrances and exits to the building are, are more secure. So the funding that we provided to make our schools safer is, is flexible funding. They can spend it on the building if they choose. They can spend it on a school resource officer if they choose. They can spend it on, on, on mental health issues if they choose. We believe that's, that local control and the local approach to this is the right one. Is there room for more regulation of guns and would it help? That's the question that's being asked. I don't think we have the answer yet. We have good, strong, we have a good, strong set of gun laws in the state of Minnesota. If you go to the pheasant's banquet or the deer hunter banquet and win a gun in Minnesota, you don't just pick up that gun and walk out with it. You've got to register. How would you control these private sales? If you, you know, a lot of these incidents recently, the gun has been legal, but somebody's used it illegally. They've taken it from the proper owner and used it. You know, we had an incident in the Twin Cities where a kid found a gun in a box of toys. Well, we could pass a law that would say you can't put your gun in a box of toys, but you can't enforce it. So it's, it's a societal recognition that the guns that are out there need to be properly controlled by the owner. That's part of the issue, but, you know, more laws doesn't always fix it.
Well, I think we, you know, from a safe school standpoint, and that's what brought the gun discussions up this year, was a couple of school shootings and they're very, very tragic issues. Both of those shootings, they were done with guns that were... Both of those shootings, they were done with guns that were legal, and I think both the owners of those guns had background checks. So in the last one was done with a shotgun and a pistol. So they certainly, those guns are acceptable in most states by law. But some of the things I think we can do for schools is harden these schools up some. We've got a lot of old schools that have several entries that are not protected. Another thing in Minnesota is, we have a statute that says if the fire alarm goes off, you have to evacuate the students immediately. I don't think we've had a school fire for 50-some years. So maybe we need to take a look at that law. If you take a look at what happened in these last couple of shootings, the fire alarms were used as part of the process to get the students in the hallway, to put them more at a disadvantage. So maybe instead of having a state statute that says we need to move the students out immediately, maybe we need to get the administration some time to, in the newer schools, they can tell, a lot of changes in what's going on in those rooms. And maybe we need to let the administration have just a short, just a short period of seconds to figure out, is this truly a fire? Are there hotspots or this or that? Do we need to move those students out? Maybe it's best we keep the students in the classroom. It's hard to say, depending on what the situation is. But right now, even if you know that there's a shooter in the hallway, you have to send the students out. And that's just not good policy. So I think there's a lot of things we need to take a look at.
That's, that's not true. My daughter's gone through shooter training, and they lock the doors off. She's been going through shooter training since kindergarten.
Yep.
And it's absolutely horrible that we're not doing anything.
And do you, has the fire alarms went off when they went through the shooter training?
I, I.
Okay, you need to ask that question.
I will ask that question. But saying, they shouldn't leave the building when the fire alarms go off is a safety hazard. I mean, like.
Ma'am?
Look, I'm telling you, what they do for shooter training now is, is they will lock the doors, and they all go hide in a quiet corner. However, they have a new, and I know that you're familiar with, they have a new shooter training to break.
Alice?
Yes. Where then they take whatever they can grab. And if an active shooter comes into the classroom, these children are supposed to throw staplers and scissors and books at them, and then run in all sorts of directions out to a safety point that they have determined by the school. And how is this not alarming to you? As a parent, it is just horrible hearing about these school shootings and not hearing any concrete discussion other than, well, they'll get them illegally. You know, I think March for Our Lives has made it really simple, what they're looking for is that people over 18, you shouldn't, anybody under 18 shouldn't have a certain kind of access to a gun. And then taking AR.
15.
Thank you. And making them illegal. And then having extensive background checks. And finally, people with violent conditions, known as abusers. A lot of these people who have gone and had these incidences have had violent paths, and no one has, you know, done anything about it. So it's not just mental health, but it needs to be like a three-tier system, where his mental health alone on a stool will fall over. You know, like, of course, the best mental health is important, but we need to do something about the guns as well. And then having children as early as age five go through shooter training is just, it's, it's just heartbreaking to have to hear your child talk about it on the walkover of school. So it's.
Well, on your, on your point about mental health, I think that is absolutely valid.
But, but.
We need to, ma'am, we need to recognize that we have people that are mentally unstable and could, under certain circumstances, commit these horrible crimes. We, as a society, need to recognize that we need to deal with those people in a way that prevents them from doing these incidents.
Right, but then what about their access to guns? You know, if you.
In many cases, their access is completely illegal already.
It's, you know, it's like, I look at it as driving a car. In order to drive a car, students now have to go through 30 hours of training in the car with a parent. They have, we have to have insurance. We have to pass a test. I mean, just in order to drive a car, why, why can't we make it more, you know, if you want to be an owner? And I have nothing against hunting, and I have nothing against gun ownership. But I want to see more safety measures in place that makes it safe for everyone. You know, I mean, I have one neighbor who's.
But the question is.
And he's fantastic, and he's very safety-conscious. And I have another neighbor who unfortunately has a lot of mental issues, and he has access to a gun and has threatened neighbors with it. And, you know, no one is, you can't take away his gun. And so there's one that takes it very safely, and there's one who doesn't. And there's a big difference. And there's, and there's something that can be done.
Well, in the last school shooting, just example, the last school shooting was done with shotgun and a rifle, or shotgun and a pistol. The owner of those guns had a background check. The owner of those guns was illegal, the guns were legal.
But they weren't locked up.
And his son took the guns.
They weren't locked up.
Now, you know, do you really think that if his son wanted to take the guns, that he wouldn't figure out a way to open the case?
And why is he not responsible, then, for not, for, for his son's actions? Like this gentleman said, we have to take responsibility for our children's actions.
Yep.
So why, why wasn't it, and, so that's.
How many lives were lost because it was a shotgun and a pistol and not an AR-15?
Yes.
That's where this argument fundamentally fails, is that we don't talk about the access to guns that are made solely for killing incredible amounts of people in a short amount of time, limiting their access. What is, what is it worth to save a life? Is it worth restricting that access if only eight instead of 23 kids died?
But the point is, is I, I'm not disagreeing, we don't want children to be shot in schools. But the point is, is that it's not, we all talk about a site rail, assault rifles. In many cases, it's not assault rifles. So how do you handle the person that has a shotgun, and somebody takes that shotgun and goes and uses it? I mean, as Paul alluded to, if somebody is to that stage, probably stricter gun laws isn't going to change things because they're going to have access, they're going to find guns. And into your illusion about driver's educate, or about driving. How many people get a DWI and continue to drive?
But there's repercussions for that DWI. There are citations, they have to go to court, and then after the third incident, they're in jail. I mean, there's, there are repercussions.
Now, wait a minute. How many people have been in accidents and killed people and have 10, 11, 12 DWIs?
Yeah, and but there's also repercussions for that. And then they're not allowed to drive that car anymore.
But that's not true. They keep on driving.
That's, you know, but not, not if they, if they killed someone and were prosecuted, they were most likely being in some type of workhouse or jail, or, I mean, it's not like they get off scot-free. There are laws that support the wrongdoing.
So what are you saying? That if someone kills somebody with a gun, they get off scot-free?
We're kind of getting hung up here, but, you know, there are a lot of things that are tied into this whole process. My thought on it is, the media has a big responsibility here, that these, every shooting, no matter where it is, how many people are hurt, there's a blow up in, in the paper over and over and over. We relive that shooting 150 times by the time it gets out of our head. Does that promote, does that make people that are unstable, that have access to guns, go out and try to be recognized and get some, you know, recognition as this person, as a, whatever value they're getting? I, I don't know. But when a shooting happens in Florida, we should hear about it once or twice or three times, whatever. But then, and then local people in Florida, in my opinion, should hear about it more than that. They should know exactly what happened, how, what went on. But we don't, as a nation, need to know a million times over every time something happens. And I think that until media grabs a hold of that and understands their responsibility in this, I think it's, I don't think we're going to solve the problem.
Yeah, the issue of, the issue of copycat behavior is a real one. The situation in Florida where he, you know, he wore the trench coat, that was a copy of what happened in Colorado. There's lots, there's lots of going on in the psychology of these people that is, you're right, I think, driven by the way we blow these issues up and examine every detail of it. And the next one along says, well, I can do one better.
Why add support?
That's a problem.
Studies that, not go into the violence.
Ma'am, hold, hold it right here, folks. We are running past, we got another town hall meeting we got to get to, so we'll make some closing comments. First of all, thank you, folks, very much for coming. This is a very interesting conversation, very interesting debate. Basically, what Paul and I want to do is let you know what happened in the last session, and appreciate all the questions. And with that said, if you need to get ahold of it, you know how to get ahold of me at my office, and I'll turn it over to Paul for his closing comments.
Well, thank you, Gary. And thank you all for being here and bringing up these issues. These, these discussions aren't going to stop, they're going to continue. But it's, we have a lot of area to cover, and I do appreciate all of you and your communications with me through my time in the legislature. It's, it's important that the dialogue continue, and our, our doors are open, our email is available. So please, please reach out. And, and bottom line for me today is, really, please take a look at some important things that are in this bill that the governor has on his desk, the seven cent, 7 percent issue and other issues that if he signs this bill, will be taken care of. And that's very, very important. So with that, thanks again for being here and safe travels.